The March 6th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I'd like to remind the audience that we provide an opportunity called Open Podium for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to city business. These meetings are before the typical council meetings, which are usually the first and third Tuesdays of each month, from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers here. And if you're willing, interested in addressing us at that time, please call the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name and the issue that you wish to discuss. And if time permits, we will take unscheduled speakers, but if you want to be sure to address us, you should call and get scheduled. These portions of the meeting are not televised or recorded. And if you have any questions on that, please call the city manager's office once again. The first thing on the agenda tonight is a discussion of a proposed franchise fee ordinance. And we've been struggling as a city to figure out a way to pay for needed street improvements as they come out over the next 10, 20, 30 years. And this is something that has been looked into, and we are doing this presentation at the beginning of the meeting because we're hoping we have more people watching and more people that will be informed of what we're talking about doing. Mr. Getchow, do you have anything you want to add before we turn it over to Mr. Ellis?
Mayor, I just want to add that this is kind of the beginning of an engagement process with getting information out for an issue that you said had, has been studied for over a year now. So you're going to hear in the presentation that we have some plans for neighborhood meeting, town hall meeting, and also some public hearings. But this is a beginning of the, a process of that discussion at the council level on the potential use of franchise fees for capital improvements.
Okay, very good. Yes, franchise fees is a discussion topic that's been occurring in Eden Prairie for probably a little over a year now, and how that relates to street maintenance and street rehabilitation. So tonight, what I'll be talking about is that nexus between the two and how we move forward with a plan to make sure that the streets we have today remain in good condition. And a key component of that is franchise fees. So to give a little bit of a background on what franchise fees are, what franchise agreements are, I think I need to explain that we've really had franchise agreements in Eden Prairie for a number of years. And we have those with XL Energy and CenterPoint Energy. We also have another utility provider here in Eden Prairie, Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative. We don't have a franchise agreement with them, but we're working on that, and that will come through this process. But the franchise agreement really allows access for the energy companies for their utilities within the right-of-way and on-city property. So it's a great advantage for them, saves them a tremendous amount of money in acquiring easements or property for their utilities. Okay. I don't know who's moving that, but (laugh). Also, it guarantees the utility companies the right to do business in Eden Prairie. Now, the franchise fees, which is really the heart of the discussion, is something that we haven't done in Eden Prairie to date. Franchise fee is simply charging a fee for the benefit of access to the city's right-of-way. So that's where that comes into play. So the pros of the franchise agreements for the utility company, like I mentioned, it keeps their cost of providing service down because they have access to free right-of-way. They can put their utilities, provide services to their customers in existing right-of-way and on-city property. It also provides paved, plowed access to their utilities, so when they do need to make upgrades, repairs, they have easy access in and out, can keep their service to their customers intact without digging up people's yards, getting in the backyards, and dealing with those types of issues. So definitely a benefit for them. The cons, you might say, are their utilities are located in the street. Adds wear and tear to our infrastructure. You can see in this picture is a photo of a utility being repaired. The other thing that it does is it adds to our street reconstruction costs. When you start looking at street reconstruction, a lot of your costs can actually be hidden underground. You're contending with water lines, sewer lines, you've got electric lines, gas lines, you've got service lines for all the customers. You can spend 25% to 50% of your project cost just on the underground. So without a doubt, it adds cost to construction. The other factor to consider is that there's less space available for city, water, sanitary sewer, and drainage systems. We're competing with that space underneath the street with the energy providers of XL, Minnesota Valley Electric, and CenterPoint. So there is a competition for space, and that can add cost because you do have those conflicts. So the problem statement, really why we're here today, is talking about the need we have for maintaining right-of-way. We have 225 mi, centerline miles of right-of-way streets here in Eden Prairie. We know that the average asphalt life is 20 years if you do not do any maintenance, and it's 40 years if you spend significant effort trying to maintain your streets. I would say Eden Prairie is closer to the 40 years. We have a very aggressive maintenance schedule, and we're going to get longer life out of our streets. But the average age of our roads are 22 years, so we've kind of passed that mid-life point of our roads. We're going to start moving from crack seals and seal coats, which are inexpensive treatments, to full-depth repairs, mills and overlays, which are much more expensive. So that's what we are going to see for the next 20 years and beyond. So the Budget Advisory Commission was the, the group that was tasked with solving this problem. The problem is, we need funding for street rehab. They went through that, looking at all the available revenue sources. Street lighting was one, garbage hauling fees was another, cellphone tower fees, increase in tax levies, and then special assessments. And then what I mean by that is if the city were to come in and do a reconstruction project, the cost of that improvement would then be assessed on the properties that benefit from it, the adjacent properties. So it can be very expensive, but that was, that was an option that many cities across the metro area have employed. And then franchise fees was the last option. So their recommendation was move forward with franchise fees. And there were a number of reasons for that. It's easy to explain, it's something very common across the metro area. I think there might be 33 cities and counting that have franchise fees. Now, there's a lot of data out there for setting rate structure because it's not something that we'd be plowing ground on. This has been done in a number of communities. We can learn from what's been done in the past. Ease of administration. The franchise fees will have zero to little cost for the city as far as overhead management of the program. It's all done through the energy providers, so there's no cost to the city. But most importantly, I think it was the fairness, that nexus that in exchange for the benefit the companies, energy companies get for the right-of-way, they share in some of the maintenance costs. So I think that's what really bridged the gap for franchise fees. The BAC went on to recommend that if we move forward with franchise fees, go with the flat fee versus the ad valorem, flat fee versus percentage. And the reason for that is, the city needs a stable source of revenue. We need to be able to project out three years from now because that's the planning horizon we work within and know that we're going to have this revenue stream that we can count on to move forward with these design and construction projects. The flat fee provides that. Ad valorem might not because it would be based on percentage of energy use, so that could fluctuate, would be more volatile. Also, from a fairness standpoint, if you have two homes, same square footage, one was built in the 70s, one was built today, the older home is not as efficient, it's going to use more energy, so why would that person have to pay more for the franchise? Because their use of the road is no different. So the flat fee made more sense from that standpoint. The ad valorem is difficult to manage. I'll say that the utility companies were very insistent that we not do that because of the burden it places on them in managing that program. And then really, when it comes down to it, flat fees is probably 95% universal for cities that do have franchise fees. There are a few of them out there that do percentage, but by and far, most of them use flat fee. So cities in the metro area that do have franchise fees, I think there's, like I said, 32, 33 that are listed here, very common names, prominent cities. We're not charting new waters. It's, it's something that's been done before. So moving towards the actual rate that would be established, we know that we need about $2 million this year, 2013, to do street maintenance if we want to keep the same pavement condition index that we have today. It's going to take about $2 million annually. So working back from that and setting your rate at no more than what you need, the structure that was brought forward is this. It's $2.50 for residential customer being provided electric utility service. It graduates up based on the size of the commercial industrial, but it goes all the way up to $25. So based on the customer classifications the electric companies have, this is, this is what we're proposing. $2.50 for residential up to $25 for large CNI, and that'll be like a Walmart. Recommended rates for gas, again, they have a different classification for customers, but we want to keep the rate structure the same. $2.50 for residential, $25 for their large box stores. What that would mean to the average single-family residential unit would be $5 a month. $2.50 for electric, $2.50 for gas, $5 a month, $60 a year. Annual revenue, like I mentioned, $2 million was the target. We know that's what we need if we want to maintain the level of service we have now. This rate structure would provide almost a million in gas, a little over a million in electric, just due to the number of customers they have, but it hits that target of $2 million. The timeline that we would be looking at moving forward with the franchise fees would be a first reading, March 20th, that would be the next council meeting, followed by a second reading on April 17th. We would continue the educational campaign that's begun. We've done some blogging, there's been some Facebook. Rick spoke to a town meeting, town hall meeting that we'll be having here in the next couple of weeks. But that would put us on track for actually collecting revenue in August of 2012. So we would see that revenue coming in this year allow us to continue with our construction schedule that we have planned. Some of the communication tools that are available to us, you're very familiar with the city website, the blogs, Facebook, city news email, PSAs, town hall meetings. We'll use everything at our disposal because we want to get the word out. We want people to buy into this, we want them to understand why we're doing it, and we want to get their feedback. If there's, if there's something that needs to be tweaked with the ordinances, with the methodology, we want to hear that. And then, like I mentioned, our next public open house will be Thursday, March 15th. We'll do that here at city center, 6 o'clock downstairs in Heritage Rooms 1 and 3. And we're just going to continue to move forward. It's an important topic for Public Works. It's, and I really think that Eden Prairie is at that point where every dollar you spend now is going to save you $4 10 years from now. And if you wait too long, the choices are very expensive. This plan will allow us to keep our pavement condition index at a level that people expect here in town. With that, I'll entertain questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ellis? Okay, comments? Comments, mine too? Go ahead.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
I know that we're going to be having this conversation quite a bit in the next month or two, and the whole point is education, and I just wondered if it wouldn't be wise kind of to mention that in the big picture, we're looking, and I've heard this number differently from your predecessor, Mr. Dietz, but looking at some unfunded number out there, $100 million, $150 million that we just don't have saved up to redo all of our roads. And if you've been paying attention in the newspapers, really quite coincidentally, the last month or two, we've been reading about some issues in Edina, some other cities where I think the average resident assumes cities just have a way to pay for these rebuilds, and no city does because there's only three options to do that. And the one is the general fund, which would be pay-as-you-go, but if you suddenly had a couple million-dollar project that would raise taxes 10, 15, 20% in one year, it's just not a way, popular way. Special assessments, which are what most cities do, but then it hits a resident with 20, 25,000. I was just down in Mankato this weekend visiting former Eden Prairie friends of ours that now live down there, and they live on a corner. And Mankato does it by the square, by the linear foot, and they're on a corner a lot. They have a potential, they've, they're going to work with them, but they've been hit with a $40,000 special assessment because the road's getting done on two sides. So again, that's not super popular. And then the third would be to have a city banker begin to put money aside year by year. And a lot of residents, constituents, don't really like the idea of us banking money for spending it 30 years down the way. So these franchise fees really have come about in recent years, I think, as a pretty smart way that's equitable and fair to come up with this solution. So I just want to kind of add that as an overlay.
Okay. Just wanted to let people know, this is not a public hearing, so we will not be hearing testimony from the audience tonight on this issue. There will be public hearings in the future. There will be ample opportunity for you to give us feedback on your thoughts on this. You can do it on Facebook. I think the city manager has a blog. You can send emails to us. You can come to the open house on the, on the 15th. But if you can't come to that open house, there are different ways you can get information on this. So we just wanted to bring this out to make it very transparent and very clear what we are talking about doing. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections, additions?
Your Honor, just a brief on council member report.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Minutes, is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the council workshop held Tuesday, February 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes for the council meeting held that same evening?
Move.
(laugh) Yours.
Move approval.
Second. Okay. Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendar, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any desire to pull any of those items for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. It brings us to our first public hearing, which is the jurist's edition. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We have this evening a request for a planned unit development concept review on 14.16 acres with waivers and a zoning district amendment in the C Regular Services Zoning District on 14.16 acres and a preliminary plat of 14.16 acres into two lots and road right-of-way at 127900 Plaza Drive. This is the Metropolitan Ford site where basically they're asking to plat this particular area into two separate lots for possibly future development purposes. And the lot meets the city code for size, dimension, floor ratio, and there are a few waivers for what really are existing conditions for both parking and wetland structure setbacks and wetland buffers. So the waivers are, again, based on existing conditions. The Plan Commission voted 8-0 to approve this project to the city council. The public hearing was published in the Eden Prairie News on February 23rd and sent to 16 property owners. And I'm not sure if the project proponent is here, but if so, it would be nice to hear a little bit about the project this evening.
(inaudible).
Thank you, please, please.
Greg Gens, Raider and Associates, I'm just representing the developer. We're just simply dividing the property into two lots. That's pretty much it, it's pretty simple. How much more to it?
And is that correct? The motivation is to possibly sell off one of them at some point?
Correct, yep.
Is, okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions for the proponent? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this property, the jurist's edition? Hearing none. Councilmember Nelson, you had a question?
The only question I have is on, like, the wetland setback. I know that it's, under its current use, it's at this, but if, is this the lot that may be redeveloped where we, in fact, might have a different opinion on the new property going back with the wetland setbacks? And if so, how does this affect what we might do with the redevelopment project?
Good question. Mr. Armia.
Your Honor, councilmembers, I think I can help answer that question. It appears that the wetland setback issue is actually on Lot 2, the lot that's already developed as the dealership. So that's the existing condition. Lot 1 doesn't seem to have any, any wetland setback issue, and that's where the sale and the potential future development potential lies.
Are there any of these waivers that will be on the lot that may be redeveloped then? Like, there's a parking setback from 10 to 0 feet? Which may make perfect sense under its current use, but might not make sense under a new use.
Again, it appears that that parking setback is also for Lot 2. I see that the 0 setback appears to be in kind of the far eastern side of that lot, and it does appear that Lot 1 has setbacks from the property line.
So the redevelopment would meet all current, you know, necessary, we could go over it with whoever was developing, and so, okay. That's, I just, especially with the wetland setback, I didn't want to put that on something and then not be able to deal with it later.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 14.1600 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district amendment within the Commercial Regional Services Zoning District on 14.16 acres and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 14.16 acres into two lots and right-of-way and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations, and I assume the council conditions that we're assuming are already in there.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have the vacation of a drainage and utility easement dedicated in Eden Prairie Ford. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is directly related to the item that was just before you. The property owners have requested a vacation of drainage and utility easements dedicated to the plat of Eden Prairie Ford, as well as other easements affecting the plat in order to facilitate the plat for the jurist's edition. So in doing so, after the vacating of the easements, then there will be new easements dedicated with the plat of the jurist's edition. And the release of the resolution vacating these easements tonight would be conditioned on the recording of the plat for the jurist's edition of which you just took action on. And notice of this public hearing for this item was published in the February 16 edition of the Eden Prairie News and was sent to nine property owners.
Any questions for Mr. Getchow? Hearing none, are there any people in the audience that wish to address the council on the vacation of this easement? Is there a motion?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating drainage and utility easements dedicated in Eden Prairie Ford lying within Menard 7th Edition on Document 1595590 and Document 3033585, all in Hennepin County, Minnesota. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is a resolution approving the use of 2012 CDBG funds. CDBG funds are community development block grant funds that flow from the federal government to cities specifically for human service, funding, and housing activities. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That, that's exactly right. And the public hearing to consider the allocation of those funds is this evening for the allocation of $243,436. And there are certain requirements that are stipulated with the allocation of the funds in terms of where the, where the funding can go. And you will see here that much of the funding, the majority of the funding, goes to our housing rehabilitation deferred loan program. But we do have a Human Services Review Committee that also meets to suggest funding for social services or human services activities as well. And before you, tonight then, within the $243,000 is a request for funding for other organizations such as Prop, the YMCA, the Independent School District 272, the Home Program, the CAPS Program, and then also a Fair Housing Initiative rounds up the allocations that are being requested for 2012. And I know Ms. Jeremiah could, could answer any questions you would have about the allocations as well.
Council, any questions? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the allocation of the CDBG funds? State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. I am Scott Zemke with Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin. Actually, I live in Apple Valley, Minnesota.
Okay.
(laugh) We are out of, the office is out of St. Louis Park, Minnesota. We serve all of Hennepin County with the exclusion of Minneapolis with our services that include energy assistance of full-cycle, had-approved housing counseling agency, do a lot of work in foreclosure prevention, first-time homebuyer counseling and education, rehab, and so forth. Why I'm here tonight is we're asking for funding for continuation of the car repair program. Car repair program is a, was started in 2006 as a partnership between our organization and the city. We assist people at 80% of area median income with, with car repairs, up to $750 or 75% of the total. The client has to contribute 25% to the, to the repair as well. In that time, since the partnership started, we've helped approximately 115 households with the program. And just here tonight to thank you for your past support and hope you can give us future support for it as well. Just want to add that Community Action does not take any admin fees for this. This is something that we do as, just the course of our, our daily business. We're a natural fit for you, just simply because we have access to a lot of folks who meet those income guidelines because of the other programs that we operate. So happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Any questions? Thank you so much for the work you do. I'm sure you've been very busy the last few years.
We have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your hearing councilmembers, my name is Kitty Engel. I work for Senior Community Services. I'm the program director for home, and home stands for household and outside maintenance for elderly. We do several different chores for older people that are at least 60 years and above. And we help them maintain their residence in a safe and clean environment. We recruit volunteers to help with many tasks, and I wanted to talk about the volunteer part of that today. We contact churches, schools, companies, scout troops, and recently, a Chamber of Commerce helped us with volunteering to do raking, window washing, weeding, garage cleaning, and many other chores. It's really wonderful to see, like, the Eden Prairie Key Club volunteer in the neighborhoods for Eden Prairie seniors. It's wonderful, too, when you see that youth connect with seniors and seniors connect with youth because the seniors realize there is some wonderful youth out there that are caring and hardworking, and the students find out history from people that have lived it. And so it's a wonderful connection that we can make. This year, we strive, this year as in each year, we strive to increase the number of older adults we serve, as well as the number of jobs and hours. But there are many factors that may prevent or help us, one of them being weather, of course, and we've had our share of weather and this year, last year, and also the economy. And despite weather and the economy, home did manage to increase the number of clients served, and we increased jobs from 402 in 2010 to 519. We increased hours from 1,282 in 2010 to 1,732 hours of service in 2011. We hope to continue to reach out to more seniors in the future in Eden Prairie, and we do appreciate your support with the CDBG funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight, Kitty, and thank you for what you do, too. I'm sure what you do makes it possible, if not just easier, for a lot of seniors to stay in their homes, which is great. And I love that student-senior connection, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Rob Kullard with the South YMC. I live in Richfield. Just want to say thank you for helping us. We scholarship youth to participate in our school-based childcare programs, after-school, before and after-school care. We scholarship over $60,000 worth of scholarships to youth serving over 40 different families, and we just appreciate all the help to help serve the youth here in Eden Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Is the demand for the service increasing, are you finding?
For scholarships? It's, it's about the same amount of kids, but the need is greater per family. So it seems that they're, we traditionally do up to 50%, but we've had to go up to 60 or 70 or 80%. And there's a couple of families that we had a scholarship up to 90%. And so it's, but the same amount of families, it's just, it's a greater need for the individual family, so.
Well, thank you. It's an important service.
You bet.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Tara Heisler. I'm here representing Prop. I reside in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I'm our new development coordinator. We wanted to thank you for your vast support, and we're really hoping to count on you in the future. Want to let you know that in 2011, we did service 1,100 families, which equals out to over 4,000 individuals. Of those 4,000 individuals, 46% of them are children. Really help us with our food shelves and other programs that are used to prevent homelessness, and our facts show us that that did help about 136 families in 2011.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, Tara, too. It's nice to meet you. When did you start?
I have been here for a whole week.
Oh. I knew you were new. I didn't know you were quite that new. That's wonderful. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So much for showing up tonight. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Marsha Partington, and I'm with Kids Adventure, the school age childcare program. We are in our first pilot year here in Eden Prairie, and we've been serving children at Eagle Heights Spanish Immersion Lower Campus and at Oak Point, Eagle Heights Upper Campus and Oak Point. And we are excited that the school board voted at their last meeting to extend the pilot program for another year so we could continue to show the community about the high standards of quality that we're working on in the program. And I just want to thank all of you for helping us out by allocating some of the CDBG grant money for our program as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Do you have any idea how many students are currently serving?
We're currently serving about 192 students at those two campuses.
Wonderful, so there's great demand.
There is. There's great demand.
Thank you for doing that job.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions about our program?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to address the council on CDBG funds?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt resolution approving the use of 2012 CDBG funds as recommended by the Eden Prairie Human Services Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Any items to question? Hearing none, roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terlutens?
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is under ordinances and resolutions, United Health Group.
Your Honor, I'm going to recuse myself from the conversation, discussion, and also the vote.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Getchell.
I'm here in council. United Health Group project that was last before you for a first reading on an ordinance for a planned unit development district review with waivers on 68 acres and a zoning district change from rural to office on 68 acres along with a site plan is here for a second reading this evening, and we're very pleased to say that quite a bit of work has been done on a development agreement over these past five months. As you can see on your, in the packet and both at the dais is the slightly revised, updated development agreement, but we're very pleased to bring this project to a second reading tonight for, again, almost 1.5 million square feet of office space on the 68-acre site in Eden Prairie. Based, again, on your first reading, there were changes made to the landscape plan based on the discussion for additional trees and for decorative planting as well. And, again, typically, a second reading is a consent agenda item, but we do have the project proponent here this evening, and we'd like them to say a few words, if possible, about the project before actions taken on the second reading.
Okay. Just a quick question. Not four additional trees, like four additional trees, you mean F-O-R.
F-O-R, Mayor. Yes, four F-O-R-U. F-O-R, F-O-R.
Okay.
For many additional trees.
Mr. Scala.
For the record, my name is Jenny Spalla. I'm with United Health Group. Nice to be back at the second reading. Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of staff, and honored guests. Well, we've had quite a journey, starting with that first step several months ago, and over the last several months, from concept to proposal to documents to approvals, we hope. It hasn't really been that simple, and early on, in fact, we said we embraced the complexity of the project. And along the way, all entities involved in the project resolved all the issues, we believe, with mutual support among all entities. By the way, we want to commend you on an excellent staff. They're great to work with, as you probably know, but this was particularly challenging for us and for them to get it right. And we want to get it right because this is for the next 50 years, we hope. Well, we partnered with you, and we want to thank you for being a good partner, for digging deep into the issues and welcoming us into the community. We want to be a good neighbor. We will continue to be a good steward of the land and of the wetlands, and we thank you for your faith in United Health Group and your patience to ensure that we meet all your expectations and all your requirements. In fact, we want to exceed your expectations if we can strive for that goal. This project, we believe, demonstrates our continued commitment to Eden Prairie and to the state of Minnesota, our home, and to our mission to help people live healthier lives and make healthcare more affordable for all Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Spalla? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the second reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review and zoning district change from rural to office on 68 acres and adopt the resolution for site plan review on 68 acres and approve the development agreement for United Health Group 2012.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, and welcome to Eden Prairie. Next on our agenda are appointments. We have appointments tonight for several things, including our city commissions. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That's correct. We have a series of appointments, and first, we have kind of in one category, appointments to our commissions. Last Tuesday, the council interviewed 18 people for several different commissions in the city, where the term of appointment will begin on April 1st, 2012. And so, tonight is the action to make the appointments to the commissions, and then later on, you'll see you have the action for the chairs and vice chairs of those commissions as well for starting on April 1st. And it's also important to note that the city will host an orientation as well for the commissioners on March 22nd.
Thank you. As Mr. Getchell mentioned, we had 18 applicants, and we do not have enough positions for those people, but it was wonderful. We had some extremely talented people that were offering their skills in a commission that's somewhat related to what they've done professionally or in a volunteer capacity, and we also had lots of people that were just very enthusiastic about giving time to the community. So, we encourage people in the future to apply for these boards and commissions. Does somebody want to make the first motion?
I just have a question real quickly.
Oh, yes.
Should ask this downstairs, but with Parks and Rec Natural Resources being considered to merge with the arts, which will require an ordinance change next meeting, are we allowed to over-appoint to the Parks and Rec tonight without having done that ordinance change? We'd be exceeding the limit that's in our current ordinance for Park and Rec until we could change the ordinance.
I actually thought the proposal was to, that the number we were appointing was within the limit of the Parks.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine. And I think this makes it nine. So, we weren't going to tweak the ordinance to add, like, to 10. We were just going to simply merge them and appoint at the nine level.
That's what I understood.
Sorry. Got it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Do you want to just go up now? How do we want to do it?
Okay. Like, everybody do one.
Okay. Move to appoint to the Conservation Commission Stacy Beddison and Sue Brown to terms ending March 31st, 2015, and?
Appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Jeffrey Larson and Benjamin McQuillan as business representatives, and Joseph Sutilla as a community representative with terms ending March 31st, 2015, and?
Appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Stephen Olson and Joanne McGuire with terms ending March 31st, 2015.
Appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Heinz Gustafson and Laura Kazmeric with terms ending March 31st, 2015, and?
Appoint to the Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Commission Cynthia Paulson with a term ending March 31st, 2014, and Hutch Coburn, Derek Gunderson, and Matthew Kraft with terms ending March 31st, 2015.
And appoint to the Planning Commission Jerry Pittsrick with a term ending March 31st, 2013, and Travis Watkey, Jacob Lee, and Stephen Frank with terms ending March 31st, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Board of Appeal and Equalization, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A separate action is needed to approve the members of our Board of Equalization and Appeal. This group has been appointed by the city to review all the property, Board of Review projects that come forward, and they do meet twice a year to discuss the different assessments on different properties. And we do have all existing members coming back, and one additional proposed new member, Todd Walker would be a new member. All the other members, Jim Johnson, Lyndon Moquist, Annette O'Connor, Patricia Pitcock, would be returning members to our Board of Appeal and Equalization.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to appoint to the Board of Appeals and Equalization Jim Johnson, Lyndon Moquist, Annette O'Connor, Patricia Pitcock, and Todd Walker for the period of April 1st, 2012 through May 31st, 2012, until the Board of Appeal and Equalization completes its work.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. We need to do appointments for chairs and vice chairs of these commissions. Anything to add to that, Mr. Getchell?
That covers it, Mayor.
Okay. Brad, go ahead.
Okay. I would move to appoint Laura Jester Chair and Greg Olson Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, and?
Appoint Jeff Larson Chair and Keith Shoal Vice Chair of the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission, and?
Appoint Ed Muehlberg Chair and Cindy Evert Vice Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission, and?
Appoint Pam Spira Chair and Robert Rozansky Vice Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and?
Appoint Jerry Nappach Chair and Hutch Coburn Vice Chair of the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Commission, and?
Appoint John Stoltz Chair and Matt Feiten Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Similarly, we need to appoint a chair and a vice chair for that Board of Appeal and Equalization. Is there a motion?
Move to appoint Patricia Pitcock Chair and Lyndon Moquist Vice Chair of the Board of Appeal and Equalization.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next, we have appointments to the Southwest LRT Community Advisory Committee. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The last of our appointments for the evening. We've had quite a bit of discussion lately about the Southwest LRT project moving along, and as part of that, a revitalization of some of the committees and groups that meet to advise the overall project as it moves forward. And there's two committees that are going to be directly involved from a resident community point of view, a business advisory committee and a community advisory committee. The business advisory committee is going to be appointed by the Metropolitan Council, but they are taking recommendations from the city, so that action's not necessary tonight. But we do have several business representatives that have been, that have previously served and will continue to serve in several facets of our community from such businesses as UHG and Emerson Rose Mount, and also our New American Academy and other organizations as well. This particular citizen advisory committee is a group that we are being requested to forward and approve recommendations to the Met Council for as well. And several of those appointments that we're requesting, and this was the case in the past, are made up of commission members, several commission members, and also those that have an interest and experience with transit in general. So, before you tonight are some proposed appointments, and we do have also in this group of five, which correlates to roughly the number of stations along the line that we have, a business representative as well from Super Value in this case, and who also happens to be a resident of the community. So, it was a desire of the council that all those members to the CAC also be residents of the city as well. So, these are the proposals before you tonight, but also be aware that there are several other business representatives and civic organizations that are represented, and there are even more committees, obviously, as you know, as council members yourselves, serving on several other advisory committees related to Southwest LRT also.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, I guess, we haven't talked about this before, but I do have some question about why we're just including three of our commissions, and then at the at-large, we've got some additional people from those commissions. And I would at least like to postpone the at-large residents to look for people from the Human Rights and Diversity Commission and the Heritage Preservation Commission as well, as I don't see any reason just to do planning, park, and rec and conservation for this. There could be heritage preservation things, there could be things of interest to human rights and diversity, or for that matter, even budget commission. So, I would like to take at least the extra two weeks for those two at-large and see if we can't broaden our commission activity on this group.
Okay, any other discussion? Kathy, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, well, we could either put off all of it, but I assume that maybe these people have a meeting coming up. So, I would like to postpone at least the two at-large, the primary and alternate at-large, and to look for other possibilities to include some of our other commissions.
Is there a second to that motion? So, it would be to approve the first six people?
And then the business rep.
Business rep. And postpone?
The at-large, and see if we can't get some more commissions members involved in this.
I'll put it on the table. Second.
Okay. Discussion, counsel.
Well, like I said before, certainly Heritage Preservation Commission perhaps has something, and then the Human Rights and Diversity Commission as well. I don't think that they have anything less to say about light rail transit than, say, Parks and Rec do. And, you know, planning is more obvious, Conservation Commission perhaps, but I would like to get a little wider breadth of our commissions' activity in light rail, which is important to all aspects of Eden Prairie residents.
Okay. Councilmember Case?
I think this actually makes sense, but is there a reason it ended up the way it did?
Councilmember Case, if I remember the previous work session discussion, I think we were somewhat following the previous concept of who we had used for previous appointments as well. So, I think the one, so that's, I think, following past president and some of the discussion that we had at the workshop previously. I think the other issue, though, too, is just to mention as well that we were given an extension to today for the appointment, so I think it's really important to move forward, at least, and that's part of the motion, I can hear, the six that are in there as well. But then I wonder if we're including other commissions, would that maybe change up some of the alternate situations as well? So, that's just kind of something I throw out, that if you have, you have three planning commission members. Councilmember Nelson's talking about the primary and alternate are planning commission members, and our at-large primary is also on planning commission, and our at-large alternate is a conservation commission member as well. So, I don't know if bringing in the other commissions, that might change to where some of the commissions might? of the commissions might be two deep instead of three deep. I don't mean to confuse things even more, but that's something to consider. But I do know that they're looking for our appointments as soon as possible.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Case.
As much as what you say makes sense, and had we had time to discuss it, I don't know that I would have been opposed to it at all. That being said, I don't know that the gain is that much greater nor is the loss. I mean, I just don't know, six to one-half does another that it's that huge a deal. And then I wonder also, is the CAC, it's not going to finish its duties in the next year, and would we reappoint that following year? I'm assuming. We've got three, four, five years, I don't know when their deadlines are, but it seems like we've got some ways out there. And I guess because of the deadline tonight, my, having heard, Rick, what you just said, I guess my preference would go back to leaving it just as is, and then making a note that when we appoint next year, that we have this discussion prior, and then if we determine that it makes sense. There's some intuitive sense to what Councilmember Nelson's saying, and then there's some intuitive sense to really loading it with planning, maybe planning, but a little bit of park and rec. I'm a big fan of HPC, but I don't know that it has to be on. I guess I'd like some time to think about that. I think the Human Rights Diversity makes more sense, maybe intuitively, to have something on, maybe. I'm not sure, depending, again, on route and, you know. But anyway, I think it's a discussion that maybe should have taken place a month ago. I'm glad you brought it up now, but we could make a note to do this earlier next year.
Okay. And I'm comfortable with what Kathy said, but I think, I agree with Ron. I think there's a certain amount of urgency to get this taken care of now, and if, maybe we can come up with a alternate to the business resident, who might be somebody that is on one of those commissions that would also serve as a business rep. You know, and I'm looking at Travis Watke, he's a small business owner, and he could have gone in the alternate slot for business resident, too. But at this point, then, we don't have anybody that we know is willing to be the primary. And I know Travis, from having watched the Planning Commission meeting, that he is very interested in serving, so.
Mayor, you bring up a really good point, and I think it goes both ways. We have one to-be-determined slot in here. And I think if you look at the business representative, could potentially be someone who is on HRDC, and/or Travis, or find HRDC to be an at-large. So maybe following the vote tonight, and these are one-year terms, as you mentioned, we could maybe potentially identify that 10th person in here from one of those commissions, and then be able to meet some of what was discussed by Councilmember Nelson tonight.
Okay. All right. Mr. Case.
Just real fast to give you the credit here, if we were just to do what you said and just try to look for that one person, we don't have anyone from the immigrant community on here at all. And that with anything to do with mass transit might be a smart thing. And we do have people like Xena Norikati or people that are very, very capable on the Human Rights Diversity. So I would guess, maybe, we don't need to stipulate, but you've heard our concerns, and maybe that could be a priority to try to fill some kind of slot in there, and then leave the HPC off and then pick them up next year, or have this conversation earlier.
Yeah, we can do that. And then to mention again, too, that we have immigrant community representation, we will have that on the business group, too, as well. But we could do.
We need to vote down this motion. Yeah, up or down.
I'll withdraw the amendment if we, you know, do try to get somebody from one of our other commissions on to at least that business alternate, as I think that we do need to include the possibility from all of our commissions.
Mr. Roberts, Rules of Order goes on with that, but I'll withdraw, I mean, whatever.
Take, withdraw the entire motion, not the amendment, because I'm not sure if you set it as an amendment.
I'll withdraw the entire motion.
I'll agree.
Okay.
Again, not sure that's kosher, but we'll go with it.
Okay. Good. I just brought my book on Roberts' Rules of Order, Act of the City, thinking I knew everything, and here I don't. Okay, is there a new motion?
I would move that we appoint the following members and alternates to the Southwest LRT Community Advisory Commission, CAC, for one-year terms. So I need to read them, or can I say as stated?
As stated.
As stated.
Okay.
With the council consensus view of looking for that alternate.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Reports of council members. Councilmember Case, you had some.
Yeah, just real briefly, this concern was brought to my attention today, and I work at Oak Point Elementary now. And we have a crossing walk that goes across to the apartment buildings, right across the street, that crosses Anderson Lakes Parkway. And there is a school district person, not really a crossing guard, but an adult that helps children across. But just this last week, we had an incident where one car stopped, but the other car went around that stopped car and zoomed ahead and almost, I don't know, almost, but anyway, endangered certainly a student. And I started thinking that, really, I can't think of another elementary school in the entire city that has this kind of issue. All the other, I mean, Eden Lake is on Anderson Lakes, but kids don't cross because there's nothing across the street to get there. And if they did need to, they'd go down to the traffic light. So it's kind of a unique situation with a very dangerous crossing walk across a busy road with, I don't know the numbers, but quite a few students that live across the street. And we've never been a K-6 school. This is brand-new to us dealing with this issue. We've always been a 5-6 building, and little kindergarteners, first graders, second graders walking home across this crosswalk. So all I raise it is as a point of maybe discussion, not tonight, but to have our staff, to have our police look at it, to have someone network in, maybe with people from the district or that school, and just see if there's anything that should or could, or, you know, that we might want to do, and maybe not. But I think it's a concern, and we certainly partner with the school district, certainly on safety.
We'll do that.
Okay, great. One other thing I thought I might bring up is, at our last meeting, we had Rebecca Timmons from the Eden Prairie Reads Committee at our meeting, and she was addressing the program that is coming up on March 19th at the International School focused around the Eden Prairie Reads book for this year, which is The Hunger Games. And that event starts at 6:00 at the International School. Again, it's Monday, May 19th, or March 19th. There's an event at 6:00, and then there's another event at 7:00, two separate events. You can come for one, you can come for both, but it'd be great if that community turned out for that community book discussion. Reports of Park and Rec Director, Mr. Lothammer.
Your Honor, council members, the next three items are very similar, so I think what I'll do is give you a brief overview of those three, and then we can take them specifically one at a time. You've seen these items before, or very similar ones before. These are authorization for us to enter into grant applications with the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission, which then goes through Hennepin County. These are funds that are part of the funding for the Twin Stadium. There was money that was legislated to be earmarked for benefiting youth sports programs and facilities within Hennepin County. This started out as a 20-year program. We have about 17 years left. There's about $2 million per year that's available in funding. So my goal is to continue to show you these on every cycle for something that either we have that's eligible, that we would have been doing as an improvement anyway, or we've been working hard to work with the athletic associations that if they have some ideas that they would like to do improvements and have funding that can go towards that, that we would assist them with the grant applications. And so you remember a successful one at Miller Park for both softball and baseball. Two of these for baseball, Franlow Field to do covered dugouts and a batting cage, and then at Starring Lake Park with the Grill Fields to do a covered dugout, which is much safer, as well as some sun shade. Half of the funding is from the Baseball Association, the other half is, would be from the Hennepin County Grant Program. The first one, though, that's listed is for Miller Park, and we have had that in our capital improvement plan for quite some time. It is due to have lights added to two of the fields. And the way that the cycle of the grant works, we think it's beneficial to at least give it a try and see if we can get some matching dollars. If we can't, we can still do the improvement. And what we've been talking with the associations is, they would love to see it this spring, but in order to take a shot at the grant, we need to defer it to this fall, which, as we've met with them, they understand that we should at least give it a shot and a try. So the first one being Miller Park with the lighting, and that's to light two soccer, lacrosse fields. So maybe if we can take that one first.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant request to the Hennepin Youth Sports Grant Program for Miller Park Soccer/Football Field Improvements.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Number two?
I move to adopt the resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant request to the Hennepin Youth Sports Grant Program for Franlow Park Baseball Fields Improvements.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The third resolution.
Move to adopt resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant request to the Hennepin Youth Sports Grant Program for the Starring Lake Cummins Grill Baseball Field Improvements.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. That brings us to a fourth item for Mr. Lothammer, a discussion on aquatic invasive species, a hot topic that we've been reading about in the newspapers and hearing about on TV.
I think the only thing that might be stealing the thunder of the zebra mussels might be the recent flying carp stories that we've been hearing, another exotic species heading upriver. So what I want to do tonight is just give you a little better understanding about what are invasive species, what are zebra mussels, what are some of the impacts that they might have, and what are some of our reactions, and how can we help people understand how they can prevent some of the spread of zebra mussels? So just to start out, invasive species, and if you look them up, there are many of them. But invasive species are things that are not native to Minnesota. They cause environmental harm or harm to human health. And invasive species can, they can occur on both land and water. And most of the information that I'm going to show you tonight comes from the DNR, and what they're putting out is public information. And the way that we think about this, we weren't, it wasn't too long ago that we were here talking about emerald ashboar. And we were relying on the Department of Agriculture to help us understand and give us guidance. And so in this case, we're really helping the DNR get some of their information out, but that's really where a lot of the experts are in guiding us on how do we make either improvements or prevent things from going faster or further than they already are. So again, most of this, you could find this information right on the DNR's website. If you think about what invasive species are, again, a lot of them are familiar to us right here in Eden Prairie. You see the zebra mussels, which is what we'll primarily be talking about, but things like oak wilt, buckthorn, gypsy moth, that was one that we saw, quite a bit of gypsy moths, remember, hanging from the trees this fall, and we also had some traps out there that were green bags that were filling themselves. Things like your Asian water milfoil, and then our recent famous friend, the emerald ashboar. All of those things are just a few of the invasive species that are out there in and around Minnesota that we're working to either control or to head off as best that we can. So going back to the zebra mussels and what are they, I think this picture is a good example of what they are. They're about a quarter to a half inch in size. You can see the size of the finger. They are the only mussel that's able to attach itself to things. So they attach themselves to other mussels, they attach themselves to boats, they will attach to docks, to floating surfaces out in the lakes, inner tubes that are out there for a while. So they are able to be attached to things very easily, and that's one of the methods of how they spread. They get transported from a lake or a body of water that has them, and then they get taken to another lake in some way, shape, or form. A lot of it is through boating, through people not washing off their boats after they come out of the water. So they originally got here back in 1988 through the chain of Great Lakes. They came across the ocean in bilge of ships, and when they got to the Great Lakes, the water from the bilge was let into the lakes, and they've been in the Great Lakes ever since. When you think about Minnesota, I believe it's approximately 30 lakes that they have been identified in. But I'll show you in a few slides where they're at or where they've been identified at in Hennepin County. Some of the things that they can do, people that take their water from lakes, some of their well water, drinking water, comes from the lakes. The zebra mussels can clog those pipes, prevent water from being an intake. They also may affect boat motors. And there's a lot of language in here, and again, I took a lot of this from the DNR, but there's a lot of may and might and can. And so this doesn't always happen. Just because a lake has zebra mussels doesn't mean that all pipes are clogged or that all boats are going to overheat. So you kind of have to take it for the amount of impact that it may or may not have, depending on the type of lake that it's in. They can cause scrapes that if they break or are stepped on or broken up, they can become very sharp. Anglers might lose lures based on the shells cutting the lines or hooking onto them. They can kill some of the natives. And one of the things that you might find is that they might actually make the water clear, but that could also cause, that sudden clarity could also cause some other things to grow and just disrupt the natural environment of the body of water, and may take a lake that was very fishable to making it unfishable. So these are things that could happen when they do get into lakes. Here is where it's identified as being infested with zebra mussels in Hennepin County. You can see some of them are unnamed wetlands, they aren't labeled as lakes or named as lakes. Really, I think the one that stands out the most is Lake Minnetonka. And we've been told about 60,000 in-and-outs on Lake Minnetonka of boats going in and out. So that represents a lot of potential for zebra mussels to come out of that lake and be taken to another lake and then be the cause of infesting that lake. A couple of things that the DNR is doing, they're increasing their education efforts. They've received more money in order to hire more people that can go out and do inspections. They're making more money available for the purchase of wash stations. One of the ways, if you're a boater and you come out, one of the ways, not just pulling things off your trailer, but a high-pressure hot wash scenario will take the zebra mussels off and other things off from your boat. Some of these wash stations that the DNR is looking to employ on a regional basis, they also capture the water, too, and so that can be taken care of, so it's not spread. They're also including their decontamination, but the education efforts, I think, is where they're really putting a lot of their time and energy. Boaters should be aware of the law, and the DNR provides some good information and some good literature as how they can follow that. We've then, in looking, how can we build on that and help them, they provide signs, and there are new signs that are coming out. At our boat launches here in Eden Prairie, we do have sign panels, because from time to time, different types of signs, like milfoil signs, now zebra mussel signs, different types of signs from either the watershed or the state or the DNR are being asked of us to put up there. So we have that available. We're looking to get those signs up to help with boater education. Also, we have a, coming up in April, the 19th, Leslie Stovering is working with the school community education to put on the scoop of aquatics invasive species. So that's an opportunity for our residents to find out more about how they can help in the prevention. Leslie's also adding a component to our water assessment, to the lake assessment contract that we already have, since the company is already out there doing the assessment, to add on an analysis that will tell us the vulnerability of our lakes is not that much more expensive. And for us, I think that's important, because depending on the nutrient level and the conditions of that lake can impact how likely these are to reproduce, how fast they are to reproduce. So if we ever were in a position where we said, we need to triage what we do, where we do it, and how we do it, and how much of it we do, having this knowledge, I think, will be important to us on which of our lakes are more susceptible than others, just for. will be important to us on which of our lakes are more susceptible than others, just from nutrients and chemical analysis of them. We have always staffed the boat launch at Riley Lake, and we've mostly done that as supervision and a traffic control with all of the boats and trailers going in and out of there. So we can easily, with the people that have been staffing there, we can easily step up their training, to be more specific, to the zebra mussel scenario. We can have them handing out literature and be a little more aggressive at the education that they can provide. And we're also looking into what does it mean to have them as a Level 1 inspector certified by the DNR, where they can help make a routine check. They don't have a lot of authority, but they have the capability to call in the next level of authority, should someone not cooperate, or should they suspect that it might be zebra mussels about to enter the lake. We've also been meeting with the local watershed district, and one of the things that we said to them, that we would give back to them with, is if we develop our preferred Riley Lake beach supervision or boat launch supervision, and they would like to supplement that with more hours or more time, that's something that we would entertain with them, and how could they be part of that funding source, so that we have more coverage down at Riley Lake. We also mentioned the additional training of employees. Yet to be seen if they do go to that DNR level of training, or if it's just something that we give them more awareness and make them more hands-on with getting literature out. How can our residents help? If you're a boater, you have a responsibility to know these laws. It is the law. It is an offense that you can be pulled over when you're driving down the road. They have the capability to do that, and make sure that you have abided by emptying your bilge, by not having a bucket with minnows that you're transferring from one lake to the other lake. You know, once things have been in one lake, they need to stay there, because if they don't, that's the potential of how things can be spread and moved to other lakes. They can examine boat hulls, swimming platforms, docks, aquatic, for aquatic plants. When you think about all the things you can buy on Craigslist, the big inner tube, the diving platform that sits out there, or buy a dock, or a platform from somebody, or a boater, a trailer, if you're going to go do that, you probably want to make sure that you have disinfected it for zebra mussels if you're going to bring it to another lake, because you'd never know where that might have been. There's also a volunteer zebra monitoring program through the DNR that they could be a part of, and then again, only release those fish or plants into the water from where they came. So I think that's also important. So I think what you're going to continue to see, whenever these types of things, if we remember back to EAB and go back even 30 years ago into emerald ashbores, or back to Dutch elm disease, we kind of hear some of the worst-case scenario possibilities, and try to gear up and prevent as best that we can. I think we're making positive steps, I think the DNR is making positive steps. Is it possible to put something in place that will guarantee that they won't get there? These are kind of little critters that can hide pretty well and be fairly easily transported. So even the best attempts to put up the full screen or inspection may still not prevent that. If they get into a lake, it doesn't necessarily mean that that lake is going to become a terrible lake to be in. It still might be very swimmable, it still might be okay for aquatic plants, there might be some zebra mussels, but it might not be, you know, a full beach with zebra mussels washed up on them. You can kind of look at this as similar to the milfoils and other aquatic things that have been out there in the last five to 10 years. There's, there is some scariness to this, but it is going to probably evolve over time. You have heard maybe some things that are happening over in Carver County. City of Chanhasen's been talking about this quite a bit, and they're looking similar to us, how can they pool resources? The watershed over there was asked to take all of their financial resources and put that all towards zebra mussel prevention, and they didn't feel that that's the best way to go about protecting their lakes from all of the things that need to happen. So I think they're recommending and going down an approach where do the best that they can, add some efforts, continue with the education, and do what you can as soon as you can and get the word out. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Lothammer?
Basically, once zebra mussels enter a body of water, there's really not much you can do at this point to mitigate them, is there?
Yeah, that is, that is true. There's no way to eradicate them through any kind of chemical or environmental control. There are some diving ducks that eat them, but they don't eat them in a way that would eliminate them from the water. They'll still, they would still be there.
Thank you for adding to our education and everybody else's.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the fact you're on top of this. Okay, that brings us to the end of the meeting. We are going to move into closed session to discuss the performance review for our relatively new city manager. Mr. Ross, do you want us to adjourn the meeting now, or come back and adjourn?
I think we would adjourn at the end of the closed session.
Okay, so we'll move into closed session now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.